So I will call to order this workshop. We have it scheduled for about an hour and I'll try to stay within that parameter. However, if we do go over, that's fine with me as well, if that's the will of the board. There was a discussion outline that was sent and the purpose of a workshop is really, you envision a select board sitting around a table with their sleeves rolled up. It's just kind of disgusting, if you will. We don't make motions and we don't vote on things at workshops. But we do some preparatory work to understand an issue or whatever. Typically, it's not a great deal of citizen input, but I do like to run workshops with citizen inputs. So I do see a couple of different people here. I have no idea who they are and if they would like to introduce themselves. I'm very open to that at this point. Let's just see if anybody wants to do that. Okay, seeing none. Go ahead.
I'll introduce myself, but I don't have a camera or anything. My name is Lee Dander. Hello Catherine, haven't talked to you in forever. And I am very interested in which way you're going with this.
Thank you. Anybody else? So as far as interaction with the... Go ahead, Richard, please.
Yes, thank you. This is Richard Robertson. I live in Monmouth. I'm a seasonal resident over to the Lake. And I'm just on here because I got the survey and I filled it out immediately and sent it right back. I thought it was well done, but I'm just kind of overall interested in the project, where this might go or might not go. And I'm here to listen tonight.
Great. Thank you, Richard.
And I do understand why you're doing this.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Good. We'll proceed and what I will do is at a couple of points, make sure I open for citizen comments or whatever. If we do get into a subject that I think the discussion is evolving in a direction where people might have questions naturally as we discuss a part of the topic, you know, I'll just simply invite people to do that. So we'll try to go through. The first thing we wanted to talk about was what we envision for broadband. And then we're going to get in and review some of the discussion of the initial work and in particular, the web sheets that Brian proposed to, gave to us. So with that in mind, is there anyone who would like to begin talking about what they envision this being in terms of what Reed Field may provide or not provide? And I'm willing to start. So, but you know, I always like to kind of step back a little bit so I don't dominate the discussion.
I'd be happy to start.
Catherine, go right ahead.
So this select board and the town manager, at the request of our own interests and from many citizens and from the group of five other towns that we're involved in, in the Western Kennebec Lake Regions Community Broadband Association, I think I got that right, have been looking at what we can do to increase access to internet for our communities. We're here as Reed Field only now because Reed Field is very unlike the other five towns that we're working with, which are Wayne, Leeds, Bayona, Mount Vernon, and Fayette. We have something, it's either 96% or 98% coverage between spectrum and consolidated communications. So we don't qualify for the same types of funding mechanisms that other towns do, meaning grant money. So we kind of have to go off on our own. The other towns can go along with us and they are actually, some of them are considering doing that. So what we're looking at is bringing fiber to the home as a community project. And how would we fund that? How do the mechanics work? What's the timeline? What kind of service will we have and at what cost? We did some good due diligence ahead of time and found out there are very few companies that are able to give us this kind of information. And one of those companies is the one represented by Brian Lippold, who is here with us. So we have hired him for this first initial phase, which was just to give a pro forma picture, if you will, of the project and what the cost might be, the subscribership, et cetera, what we might expect. He also gave us a project timeline at an earlier date that was about a month ago. And so we found out from that first piece, the project timeline and budget, that this could be done in a 12 to 18 month period from the time we begin. So whenever we begin determines when we end. We could go slower than that. We could begin and take it easier. We could begin and not be able to go as quickly because there's a lot of demand right now and all of the people who are doing the installations are getting busier and busier. There could be supply issues. So there's kind of a window in there. But we've recognized that there's a tremendous need in our town. Many people are working from home. Many people have children going to school remotely. There are businesses in town that rely on internet. People are using telemedicine. So there's just a lot of need and we've heard quite a few comments from residents. I'm going to say, well Eric could probably give us a better number, but I think there are at least 20 people who've told us about extreme issues that they have. So they have cable internet and they get almost no service. And that's like internet bandwidth. And when they call to get actual service, they get almost none of that either. So they're paying a fairly decent price for not much of a service. And what we're looking to do is to provide the best service that's available in anywhere at a competitive cost. So I think that kind of summed that up.
If that's your vision that you're contributing, yes. But you also gave a good background summary as to how we've gotten to where we are. So I really do appreciate that as well. Any other board members want to speak to their interest in this? Go ahead, please. Dennis, you'll need to...
Yeah, absolutely. I just want to say thank you for everyone who is here, especially, you know, engaged in this. I think it's important for us to always, one of the things that this board has continued to do is always be forward thinking and forward looking. And basically, just to echo what Catherine was saying, this is an opportunity for us to do something that is very unique and also, which I think also follows kind of a tradition of Reed Field, where we invest in our town for the future. Trails, things like that, beach access, all of that sort of stuff is always looking towards the future. So this seems like a very, a very interesting way for us to continue doing that, that has real world draw for folks in our town. So it's a very exciting conversation. Thank you.
Yeah, one of the things that's difficult about Zoom is I can't pick up body language, particularly when you're not on camera. Ralph, do you have anything to add or Chris?
I just think it's something that we've needed for a long time and it isn't going to happen immediately, but the sooner we start, the sooner we'll have it. And it's going to be a service we're going to be able to provide that the residents would pay, but it'd be a competitive pay. So we would have to pay for the installation, but then everyone paying for the service would be paying that back.
Okay. Ralph, do you have anything you want to add at this point?
Well, in terms of vision, it is obviously something we need to do. And probably the sooner the better, but cost is the big driver. We need to get a real firm handle on what that number will be. And we need to match that with the actual demand. And I think that is still a moving target for us. So I think one of the questions that I'm hoping to have answered tonight, and Brian, I'm hoping you can do this. I know from a construction point of view, the longer you delay projects, the more they cost. I'm wondering if our demand is not there for this service at a level where we would deem it feasible to spend the amount of money we're talking about, will the price go down if we wait? Which is somewhat the norm from my understanding where technology is concerned. But the vision is yes, we need to do it. It's coming. I think we have a fairly savvy community overall in terms of utilization of this kind of service. And the more of it we can provide, the better off we're all going to be.
Thank you. I guess I'll just share a little bit of my vision up at the top, just so people get a little bit of background as to where I'm coming from. And I'm going to talk in very, very, very broad terms because we certainly are going to get into the numbers and specifics and all of that as we go along. But what is it we want to deliver to Reed Field? What is it that Reed Field residents will benefit from in terms of a project like this? And I see us ending up with a consumer-driven utility. Perhaps it's governance, you know, has some sort of hybrid partnership within it. I see the town playing a very significant role in getting it started. I see the town having significant representation within the utility as well. But I want it to be very consumer-driven. I want to see access to all at better than market prices, current market prices, I should say. I want to be not just competitive, but hyper-competitive in terms of market prices. And I'll speak to that as we get into the pro forma and talk a little bit about that because I think that the customers in the long run may not only be Reed Field residents. They may be opportunities for us to lease some service band, if you will, to outside entities. I don't know, that's not built into the pro forma, but I think we ought to be talking about that to some extent. I want to see minimal to zero tax impact. That's not what we're going to talk about probably tonight because there is an impact. But I want to see how we can be as creative as possible to minimize that impact. At the same time, I do want to build a system that addresses digital inequity. We do know we have that in society because this broadband is now, it's an access issue for people to work, to do many things that are necessary this year, in particular schooling, for example. So I do want to have some provision in whatever we end up with to help low-income individuals also access that same utility that the very wealthiest person in town can access. So I want to address that inequality that exists. And that inequality isn't just income-based, it's sort of mile-based too. If you happen to be down a deep dark road someplace in the corner of Reed Field, I want us from the initial startup of this to plan that anyone can connect to this utility. And that's, we're doing this for the entire town, just like we would not, I'm going to say this loosely, decide not to plow a road. And I know there are some that aren't plowed because they're private, but I do see us trying to reach every single person in town. And I think, you know, the bottom line is, we have a population with probably a lot of people who in their 50s, they're digital savvy, or early 60s, they're digital savvy and they, if they are going to age in place in Reed Field, then having access for telemedicine, for continuing education of themselves, even as adults, and we need education access for youth, for remote learning, et cetera, et cetera, for healthcare and for work, I think those are all really important parts of that vision. So that's kind of where I see us. That's the big picture, if you will, in terms of what I would like to see us be able to deliver. So with that in mind, let's get into some of the roll up your sleeves and nitty-gritty discussion of the consulting work that was done. And I'm going to turn it over to Brian. I'm not sure how you wanted to proceed with this presentation. And we didn't ask you to do some sort of formal presentation, but to help us become a little bit more familiar with your assumptions, the numbers, and give board members and probably the public too, an opportunity to ask questions.
Very good. So thank you for inviting me to present and let's make this interactive. I'm going to go through the handout and there's a lot of detail there. And we'll go through and ask questions as we go. Eric, do I have the ability to share my screen?
I was just checking on that. I believe you do, but if not, let me know.
I do not.
Okay, let me try again here. Try now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent.
Let me find what I sent you. So first, I'm going to sort of lay out for you how I go about thinking through putting together a financial pro forma. And for everyone's benefit, the task that I had was put together a five-year financial operating pro forma that would allow us to look at the financial results with a number of different variables. So be able to show how it would look if we were pricing the service at X, show how it would look if we were pricing the service at Y, look at the take rate or the market share, how quickly you could grow that, to really look at the potential sustainability of the operation. And also factored into that, of course, is how do you pay for that construction? So all of that is integrated into this process. I put down some what I call network theorems. And these are the issues that I think about when you're talking about a fiber-to-the-home network or competing with the cable company and the phone company and so forth. And I'm not going to go through all of those, but those are all sort of truisms that you're faced with, that you need to make sure that you're thinking about as you go through the process. I put in here the timeline and budget that we went through a month ago, just as reference. We're in that first line item on here, the financial operating pro forma. And we would be a little while before you'd be in a position to go out to bid for anything. But at a high level, we're looking at a cost of between 3.9 million and 4.2. But these rows that I highlighted in green are based on our best knowledge right now, but those numbers would be refined by going through an RFP process, submitting poll applications to the poll owners before you would have a final number as to what all of this would cost. So for the purposes of the financial pro forma, I used a capital amount of 4.2 million, just to round it and sort of make it what I view as probably the worst case. I'm looking at this as if you wouldn't move forward unless you had a minimum quantity of subscribers sign up for service before you built the network. We call that a pre-subscription process. And that's just to make sure that you're going to have the take rate of the market share to make it successful. The other assumption in here, and this can change, is I'm assuming that it wouldn't be an open access network where any number of internet service providers could utilize it, but rather it would be a town-owned and provided service where it wouldn't necessarily be open to other providers. But we can modify the model and to account for all of those things. So before I go any further, was there any questions on that?
So I guess just to clarify something, Brian, and I'm just, this is something I don't have any question about, but if you look up, there aren't any dates at the top when you go across. It just dials out month one through month 18. So one of the pieces we'll have to discuss is how do we arrange public, how do we get the right public input to pull the trigger on an 18-month project or 20-month project or whatever happens to be? So there aren't any dates attached to this at this point. Let's go ahead, Brian.
Yep. So the first thing I did was, because I needed to be able to build in the repayment of principal and interest into the pro forma, I looked at the financing options and assuming that there's no grant money available. And at a, I looked at your total assessed value within the community, your mill rate, factored in the 4.2 million, and I put a 3% interest rate in here. That's high right now. I've seen some rates for municipal funding down at 1.5%, but for purposes of this, I set it at 3%. But within the model, we can change that on the fly and we'll go through that later. And I looked at a conventional loan as well as bond financing. And with, I'm going to skip down to bond financing. As I understand it, when you issue a municipal bond, there's a debt service reserve of 10%. There's the cost of financing of 2% and that you don't necessarily have within a conventional loan. However, that debt reserve, you get that amount back at the maturity of the bonds. So you've got to keep that in mind. The annual payment on this would be, for a bond, would be $300,000. If it's a conventional loan, about $280,000. But there are variables in there. So, and I'm not a finance expert. So everything that I'm presenting here, ultimately, you're going to want to have this reviewed by a finance expert to validate all of this.
Can I interrupt, Brian?
Yes.
And I just want to ask Eric, your impressions on the bond financing, Eric? Because we've done a fair amount of it. Do you see any macro questions that you should be looking at or do you have any comment on the bond as presented in the... And this isn't a proposed bond, this is just how the financing would work. What do you, do you see any holes there, Eric?
Well, no, not directly. I think the 3% is definitely high. That's a recognized item. The one thing, I believe that the 10% reserve is something that we would be doing as a best practice. I've not taken out a bond that's this large, so the larger bonds may require that. The smaller municipal bonds that we've taken on, you know, in the $500,000 to $700,000 range, have not required that level of withholding or reserve. But it doesn't mean that that wouldn't, couldn't be the case for a larger one. So I'd have to look at that more. But that is one area where, again, it would be wise for us to have a contingency to begin with. But maybe that shows up later on in the model as well. So just, that's the one thing I noticed that we would want to look at.
Can I follow up on that debt service reserve issue as well, please, Bruce?
Yes, go right ahead.
First of all, in a past life in a different state, I'm not familiar with this particular component. It was my understanding that as you are vetted for viability for a bond issue, that your undesignated fund balance, in many cases, if the reserve is sufficient, serves that purpose. And then secondarily, if that is not the case here in Maine, what I'm wondering is, if we're talking a 20-year bond, we're getting marginal interest on it over the course of the life of the bond and they keep it right to the bitter end, I'm wondering whether or not, if this is basic practice, whether or not that reserve could be drawn down as the level of debt decline so that we get some of that money back or we could apply it toward an actual annual payment?
Well, let's just table that for now as something that's flagged. And that's why I asked Eric the question and I'm very glad to have the comment, Ralph, because I flagged that as well. We don't have that on any of the bonds that we've been doing. So I, and it's a huge number and I'm not familiar with that particular practice. So we'll look at that a lot closer. So continue with your presentation, please, Brian.
Perfect. All right. So moving into the financial pro forma, and what I did is, I really, I took a snapshot of the screen here to display this. But I wanted to be able to illustrate for you all of the revenue and expense components within the calculations and to run through a lot of these assumptions. So first of all, we have what we believe is 1,331 potential subscriber locations within the town. Some of those could be multi-tenant. So the number of subscribers could be greater, but we don't have that data right now. And then over the five years, we have a variable in there to change what would the market share be for each of those years that would obviously then drive revenue and expense. In this example, I set it at 40% for all five years. And the reason I did that was, in other markets where you're competing with a cable company, other providers have been able to achieve 40% and higher. But that's a good number to use for planning purposes. But as I get through this, you'll see we've calculated it at different percentages and different ramp rates and so forth. But we can adjust the model for however you want to look at it. That 40% market share in the first year is evenly distributed over the 12 months. So it ramps up and at the end of that 12th month, you've got your 40%. And for the purposes of this snapshot, it remains at 40% through the end of the five years. I don't show any...
I have a question, Ray. This was something I also flagged and I can only, I mean, we're going to have to talk with some people, I guess, that have more experience with this. I don't know why we're not assuming growth in this, in this project and this over time because it seems to me if you're delivering a superior service and trying to be as competitive as possible, pardon my feelings, but I think we should be able to pound the other providers into the dust.
Yeah, and I agree with you. Yeah, and and I, I agree with you a hundred percent. But for purposes of making your decisions, I want to be conservative.
Well, I do, I do too, but I guess my one concern is that. Being conservative and presenting something we see no growth in concerns me. Even if we say, here are some models that do show growth. I guess I would like to see those parallel models at some point. And maybe they're right, right there. This, this was a, this was a table I had a hard time understanding.
Right, and I expected that. And, and I sort of, I'd like to be able to put some additional descriptions to all this. But we didn't have the time to fully explain everything, but I will right now.
Okay, great.
And this table looks at market share. Starting at twenty five percent and growing to forty five percent. And down here, it starts at thirty percent and grows to fifty. Down here, it starts at thirty five to fifty five, forty to sixty. And that's where I left it. But my point was, is that we can put whatever in the model you'd like to see. All right, but and I, and I calculated for that market share, service pricing ranging from thirty dollars to seventy dollars. So if you started at forty percent. And after five years, you were at sixty percent. And your price for service was thirty dollars. Then on the left in the yellow, if you use taxes to pay for the principal and interest. That would cost, depending on market share, for each subscriber. Somewhere between thirty one dollars and thirty three dollars, assuming a two hundred thousand dollar assessed value. So if your assessed value was four hundred thousand, you'd have to double that number. All right, so the, the model has almost an infinite number of permutations. It's however we set up the market share growth, the price for your service and so forth. Also, I looked at if you, instead of using tax dollars, you assessed an infrastructure fee. What would that infrastructure fee need to be per month? And then on the right side and on the left side, the left side in yellow is the service price plus the tax increase. That's what your monthly service price would be. And on the right side, instead of taxes, you were using an infrastructure fee. That's what the prices would be.
The different. Oh, so Brian, if, can we clarify this for people who are looking at it? If you go right to the top of the model, okay? The very first line where we have thirty dollars in the green.
Correct.
What will a customer pay that first year under both of those scenarios?
So they're going to pay, if you use taxes, sixty four dollars a month. If you use a. If you use an infrastructure fee, the first year, it's going to be a hundred and sixty four dollars a month. Why the big disparity? Well, the reason is with an infrastructure fee, it's only the subscribers that are paying.
Right.
Or the debt service. With taxes, it's all, all citizens are paying through their taxes. So the, the effect is a lower overall cost for the service.
Right, and the numbers that are in the yellow are monthly numbers, right? They're not annual numbers.
Yeah, I, I should have made note of that here, yes. Yeah, these are monthly numbers.
So. So really, you're paying, are you paying the sixty four dollars? Or you're paying thirty dollars plus sixty four? That's what I need to know.
You're paying thirty dollars a month. And your taxes, if your assessed value is two hundred thousand, will go up sixty four dollars a month.
Okay, so you're paying.
I'm sorry, I said that wrong. Thirty dollars for service, tax increase of thirty four dollars a month. Gets you an overall price of sixty four.
Okay, so essentially, you are paying sixty four dollars a month out of your pocket. Whether it be in taxes or the service pricing. To, to get a month's internet service of fiber, which is.
Correct.
The best, the best thing since sliced bread. We can talk about that later. But the, and the point is that under a forty percent. Market penetration, you also have sixty percent of other taxpayers. These are very rough numbers we're throwing around, also paying that thirty four dollars a month.
That's exactly right. And it, if your assessed value is less than two hundred, you're going to pay less.
Right, and more.
Going to pay more. So.
The point, the point is, if I can make a quick point and then I'm going to shut up. Is that we're, we're essentially making a down payment for every single person. So it would be very. It would really behoove people to grab fiber at thirty dollars or forty dollars, wherever the pricing ends up at. Because we're already paying a little bit of it on your behalf anyhow.
Exactly. And this, that type of a model also goes partway towards addressing your equity issue. That you want it to be affordable for all citizens regardless of income level. All right, now, I'm not saying that that's the sole way to tackle that. There's a lot of other variables there. But anyways, that's how this table is set up.
So before you move on, I believe Catherine raised her hand.
All right.
Please, Catherine, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you.
No, that's okay, I just raised it. Um, so Brian, I understand everything you've said, and Bruce, thank you for having this all explained to us. If we're going in the other direction to the right, if we don't pay any of it through taxes. As a broad-based tax to everyone, regardless of whether they're using the service or not. That's going in to the right direction, correct?
That's correct.
And so then that would be your thirty dollars plus the one thirty four gives you the total of the hundred and sixty four.
That's correct.
And so that going to the right in the sort of light green is that only the people who are using the service would be paying for the service.
That's correct.
And so my comment to that as a select board member and a person working on this project. Is that one of the key pieces we need to decide as a town is, is this, in my opinion. When we build roads, we build roads to everyone. Regardless of the fact that some people never drive on any of them. They might drive only on the state roads in town and never on a town-owned road. But they're still paying for them because they're part of the town infrastructure. And so the model that's in the yellow is using that sort of reasoning. That we are going to provide this service for the whole town. And everyone has an opportunity to take advantage of it if they so choose, just like you could choose to drive on a town-owned road or a state road. Whereas the other model is we're building it and having just the users use it. And that would be kind of like if you're on a road with only three people, then you three people have to pay to have your road constructed. And the town doesn't do it. And that's like the private road model that Bruce kind of mentioned at the beginning. We don't plow all the roads. And so I think that's something we need to be really careful in explaining to people so that the community. When they vote at town meeting can make the choice that they think is correct for the town. Thank you.
Bruce, can I have a, can I ask a question as well to this, to this issue?
Please.
In your experience, Brian, have towns taken this data and perhaps create a hybrid model? Where there is some level of user fee that might go down over time as the subscription rate rises? Because I see a difficulty in some quarters with people saying, I don't want it, I'm not going to use it. Why should I be paying for it? And Catherine, with all due respect, I think that this is perhaps just a little bit different than public roads. And the distinction might be a little bit more clear cut here.
So. Thank you, I, I guess I'll just make a very quick comment. I think the internet's the highway we're all on, and I don't see there's different roads. But, and, and that's not a disagreeable way of stating that, Ralph. It's just, I, I see it different because I think we're headed in a different direction as a complete society. So go ahead, please, Brian, why don't you continue? I'm going to stop after you finish your presentation because I want to make sure I hear from anybody in the public on this.
Yeah, and, and to Ralph's comment, you could have a hybrid. Build the model wherever you want. It's. But the, the one thing I want to go back to is one of our theorems. Is the lowest price builds greater market share.
And, and, and that's the competitive price too. Because the cost of cable, the minute we introduce this, there's going to be specials galore.
Right. Right, so now the other thing I added here from bottom was for the West Kennebec Lakes Group. Matrix Design Group has a proposal on the table that. They would charge a hundred dollars, I'm sorry, ninety five dollars for a hundred megabit, one fifty for two meg, two hundred megabit. And there would be a ten dollar. On top of. So it is a comparable model. That Matrix is offering to what you see over here in the infrastructure fee scenario.
Matrix again?
Matrix is a firm that has proposed building fiber in all of Fayette, Vienna. And portions of Mount Vernon, a small portion of Reedfield. And portions of Leeds and Wayne.
So, so Brian, without going too far down the rabbit hill, a rabbit hole, the rabbit hill, that's interesting. The rabbit hole, why are there limits for at two hundred megabits? Or you can do a gig?
Well, you know, they're a private company. They, that's how they've put their model together. And I, you know, you could agree with it or not, but you know, they're going this to make money.
Yeah.
The municipality doesn't have to make money. Ideally, you're going to always break even theoretically. But anyways, that's, coming back to the model, that's the only reason I put forty, 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 forty in here was. To be conservative. And to drive home the point that you're going to want to have a target as to percent who are pre-subscribing. Before you decide to move forward. And you want to have a model that is conservative so that your actual performance is better than what you model.
Great. And then you get into the operating expenses.
Well, just before we go there, I also have in here a, a install charge per subscriber of five hundred dollars. But if you've pre-subscribed, you don't get charged an install fee. That only comes into play for, after the network has been built and people that sign up after the fact, then they have an install fee.
Let me ask, let me, let me ask you a quick question on that, Brian. Is that install fee actual cost? Or is it cost?
It, it's, it's, that's actually less than the actual cost.
So, so once the network is built, if I'm sitting in a home that's one pole away. It's going to, to get the tech to put fiber in my home, it's going to cost me five hundred bucks. I mean, that's, that's, that's.
The actual cost is going to average about one thousand. And I, I factored in here that you would charge five hundred. These are, again, variables in the model. You can put one in there.
But the point is, when you initially build the entire model, you can financially absorb an assumption. That will allow all initial people to, who subscribe, not to have that cost. And then it becomes into cost because now we're, we're making a house call.
Right. Exactly, and, and this helps drive your market share right from the start by not charging them if they sign up first. So I, I just wanted to explain, that's built into the model. So looking at the expenses, I factored in a three percent inflation rate. Year over year, which is high right now. And it, it's applied to those expense items that you wouldn't necessarily contract for beyond a year. Some of the expense items in here I haven't factored in because you would contract for it. So we have, we call IP transit, but that's really the connection to the worldwide web. So that's getting you out of Reed, Reedfield and connected to the internet. I put in an amount here of just over two thousand dollars. That's an actual quote from a provider. And it grows over time. And it, I've got it set at six percent of revenue. But you don't see it growing here because we have the market share frozen at forty percent for all five years. But that is back into the others.
And Brian, I have a question on operating expenses. If you go down about a little less than, a little more than a third way, outside plant, back plant, there's no physical structure in town. Right, I mean, it's, the network comes in.
That, that's, that's, that's the core network. The backbone. And we call that outside plant in the industry.
It's a. Okay, so it's a term.
It's a term.
Yeah, I just didn't want people to get the idea that you're going to see something like a substation or something like that being built in town.
No, 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 that's just, that's the fiber up on the pole.
Okay, great, thank you.
So we, we have the number of poles, the annual license fee. And the, and the number of poles is an estimate right now. We wouldn't know until we do the actual engineering. The utilities and fuel is really electric and fuel for a generator to provide backup and just put in a modest amount there. We have maintenance on the outside plant on a yearly basis. If. There's a road widening project and they move the poles back and you've got to transfer your cable. That's designed to recover some of those costs. Insurance on the, on the network. And this is based on a live example elsewhere in the state as to what the insurance costs were. And that I have an inflation factor on. So I look at the gross margin, which we don't need to go through right now. And then the sales general administrative. And this is where you would hire a network operator. And they would have a base fee on an annual basis and they would have a per subscriber fee. I mirrored the fees that the town of Islesborough is using today for a similar setup. But you would go up to bid for that, and those numbers would probably change. I look at this as worst case. And then we've built it, admin, postage, truck maintenance. Operating contingency of ten thousand a year. And you mentioned contingency earlier. On the capital side, we have a ten percent contingency built into the capital side. Which you would reduce once you had firm pricing on the make ready and the construction. which you would reduce once you had firm pricing on the make ready and the construction. I factored in a two percent bad debt, which is actually a little high in the industry for this type of a service. They have a little bit of accounting and legal in there. So, at, at, the way I have it set, at thirty dollars, you have a, an operating loss on an annual basis. The first year is the biggest because you're ramping up. And after that, in this model, it's stabilized to about a hundred and seventy-five, and then the impact of inflation. And this is very, very similar to the Islesborough model. They have an operating loss that they're using tax dollars to subsidize. And then, for any new subscribers that install after the initial construction, I put in a cost of a thousand dollars below the line. The reason is, is that's a depreciable expense or capital item. And so, for the, and then I put in the bond payment. So, what I'm looking at here is the annual net tax increase. The first year would be just over five hundred thousand, which is your operating loss plus your bond payment. And then subsequent years, it goes down a little bit and then starts climbing. And that translates for Reedfield into a mill rate increase as a result of this project of about two dollars. And then it declines in the second year and then starts coming back up. Again, there's so many variables in this model that when we set it up, how you finalize on it, all these numbers will flesh out. So, and then down below, I looked at, again, that table on the next page. This is really looking at it at forty percent market share, thirty dollar service price, and that gives you your total subscription cost on both using taxes and using an infrastructure fee.
Okay.
Now, the, the model is, it's actually set up on a monthly basis. And I've, I just latched at the presentation purpose. But we can do all kinds of what ifs here in terms of any of the cost components, the market share, any of the service pricing components, debt service, so forth. And we can also change the set value average and so forth. Now, another, another project, we looked at what would the impact be for every taxpayer individually? And we can build that in here as well if we chose to. I think it's a little premature to do that, but.
Thank you. Let's, are you set, Brian?
Yeah, so that was what I wanted to walk through with you. Obviously, there's gonna be a lot of back and forth and iterations here.
Right, yeah, so, I mean, this, this is, you put one number in a cell and it changes everything or make a different assumption or price it differently. And then it could be even variables, like I'm looking at the new subscriber install. I mean, maybe that's one of the places you do end up addressing digital inequity, inequality, is you have some sort of sliding scale on that. But in any case, let's put all of that aside, and I want to make sure before seven o'clock here that we let anybody who has a question or a comment on what we've been presented thus far to do so. And I'll try to work through the remainder of the discussion points afterwards, Brian. So, go ahead. This is free and open. If you are, if you have a question from the public as well as the board, I, this is a good place. I want to hear it.
This is Ellie, this is Lee Sandler. And I had the pleasure of having a good conversation with our town manager today about this. And I'd like you folks to perhaps take a look at Starlink and Elon Musk. There will be, they will be going live by June, from what I understand. The startup cost with that is four ninety-nine, and it is ninety-nine dollars a month thereafter. But you're getting a full gig per second on the download. I do not know, I do not know what the upload is. From judging, just listening to what you're talking about, there's a lot of money gonna be spent here. Service is definitely needed. What we have now is clearly unacceptable. But I do think you need to look into not only Starlink, but you also have WorldCom, which is, they have two birds, one go east, one go west. They're up now and operating in the Canadian market, although they can cover all the way down to Washington DC. And there was some talk about Starlink, when they go live, that WorldCom would open up their, open up the market when that happens. And their cost in Europe, and I've used them in Europe, their cost is thirty-five USD, and it's impeccable service. Again, it's microwave and/or cellular service. So, clouds and snow do not make a difference. Topography does not make a difference. And it's for that reason that I honestly think that the current method of getting your cable TV and internet probably won't be around very much longer. So, it's just something to think about. The cost of, when I did some research on this not too long ago, the cost of a drop was six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. For those folks that don't know what a drop is, that's the cost of the line going by your house and then from the pole to your house. So, each individual drop had a, had a dollar range of six twenty-seven. I, I don't know what it is. You may have upgraded numbers to that. But when you're talking about increasing taxes, you're providing a service, and that's great. I'm not so sure, if you're looking at equitable things, I'm not sure my next door neighbor who is a, who just became a widow with two kids is gonna be able to afford a five hundred dollar bill, foster taxes going up. And I don't know if that's gonna be equitable. I would assume it would not be. That's my comments. I will shut up.
Thank you.
This is Dick Robertson.
Hi, Dick.
Brian, you've done a great job presenting this. The one thing that really stands out here is I think you've got to get a better handle on the number of subscribers because this whole performer is built on the number of subscribers who's gonna use this service. And that's gonna have a huge impact on all of the numbers.
Yeah, and, and I, Dick, I think on that, as we get into actually discussing further planning, I don't see a trigger pull on anything of this nature until we achieve a a committed, if you will, and I'm putting that in parentheses, uptake of customers that we will be able to count on. So, to your point, that's, that's something that bears a lot of thought. Other, other folks?
How, how do you go about getting a better handle on the number of people who would subscribe?
We're gonna have to ask people. I mean, it's as simple as that. We're gonna have to ask people and put out a pre-signup. You know, once we know what we want to present for a pricing model and what it will cost, we'll have to have some sort of pre-signup commitments. And that's going to basically give them, those people who pre-signup, the five hundred dollar connection at no cost.
Yeah, I do the budgeting, I'm the treasurer of a water association, and the whole thing is driven on the number of hookups.
Yeah.
And again, it's exactly the same thing you're dealing with here.
Yes, thank you. Other folks? Both board and public? Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, this is, this is all something that I think is a fantastic forward-thinking idea. But I have, I just, I have, I'm not a hundred percent there yet because of, you know, the subscriber numbers and things like that. I, I, I mean, I understand what we are looking at. The numbers are created, they're based on certain models. But I'll tell you that the, you know, the cost of, you know, monthly service is a huge aspect of this. And, you know, it's sort of like a concept that, you know, you are getting a far superior service, but some folks just simply can't afford. And while we, we talk about equity and having the ability, and it's the future, you know, the biggest thing for me is affording the future. And that's gonna be a big thing for me to watch. I'm not smart enough about it yet to ask any questions to seem like I am smart. But I, I think that this is one of those things that I just, I want to continue being a part of this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I'll go, I'll put my hand down, but. So, there are several things there. One thing we need to remember is that people who are already subscribed are your most likely subscribers. And those people already have a monthly cost in their budget. And so, this is not an increase to their budget, it's a replacement. And so, whatever the differential is, is what the increase would be.
Right, and that, I think it's difficult to assume that that will be able to just be bumped up. And so, that's my biggest concern. Not that it can't, not that we can't make a better budget, but that's extra money, but bottom line.
Right, well, we don't know that it's a bump up because we don't know what people are paying currently, and you don't know what this is gonna cost. So, that's an unknown.
If we cost fiber service for the same amount as copper, that would be amazing.
Right. Currently is, is higher than what we're talking about here. So, for what I'm paying, it would be a decrease. So, I think we just have to keep in mind that people are in different situations, which is what you're saying. And addressing the satellite situation, we don't know what service Elon Musk is gonna be able to provide. His whole network is not going to be up in June. From what I've read, it's like a ten-year rollout to cover everybody. And what we're talking about is, in a very short period of time, covering every location in our town. So, I think we need to be careful that we're comparing like services. And I think it's really worth delving into what those are because those are important questions we need to provide for people.
My understanding is that Starlink depends on sixty thousand small satellites. And that sounds a lot, like a lot of launching over, obviously, it's not a one-to-one launch, but I think that's far, far into the future, and I'm not sure the service is going to end up being exactly the, is reliable as, as a hard fiber to your, to your home. But let's, let's go on and make sure we hear from anybody else in the public. Yes.
Can I interject here on that? It's gonna require twenty-six satellites for the US, twenty of which are already up, four are going up in the next thirty to forty days, and then the final two should be up and operative by June first. My understanding is he wants worldwide, and there will be approximately, from my understanding, there'll approximately be seventy-four satellites. I'm more concerned with northern, North America, actually, than I am anything else. And the only remaining birds for that are those four. And those will be up shortly and operative. His cost has been already published. It's four ninety-five, four ninety-nine for his, for the equipment to receive it. And the cost is ninety-nine dollars a month, period. That's his service, and it's one, guaranteed one gigabyte down, and I do not know what the up is. I have no idea. Was not able to find that out. He wants one, he wants a service to be more than compatible, more than competitive with WorldCom. And like I said, I've used WorldCom, and it's impeccable. So, will it be up in June? Supposedly it's supposed to be. I don't know. Will it be up by next June? You can bet it probably, it will be if, if he has anything to do with it, and he does. So, it's just another way to go. And again, it's simply going to be, regardless of when it goes up, if it goes up, whether it's him or WorldCom, it's just another, another option for people to use and for people to have. You've all heard about 5G. These are all cellular things. And a lot of the networks are expanding from cellular to broadcast TV and into online stuff. So, you're gonna see pretty soon your cellular people offering all different types of packages. Does that mean we don't need hard-wired internet? I don't know. I can only tell you what I'm seeing. I'm in that, my son and I are in that trade, so we see it all the time. It is what it is. That's why I'm interested in towns. I better shut up then. So, thank you, Catherine. I didn't need to step on anything, you know, on what you were saying.
No problem.
Did you finish, Catherine? Okay, are there any other members of the public that have questions on Brian's presentation? We're gonna talk about some other thoughts. And I just want to make sure I wrap up with Brian and let him go if he wants to. He's obviously welcome to stay around. But let's see if there's any other comments or questions on the pro forma work that he's provided thus far. And we may be asking him to go back and start playing, I mean, we'll have additional conversations and we'll ask him to tweak this or tweak that, I'm sure.
So, yeah, I came into this a little late, but it sounded like it wasn't gonna be offered in all of Reedfield.
Could you introduce yourself?
No, this is Garrett Lucas.
Yeah, Gary. The idea is, is it would be introduced to every, every resident of Reedfield, both year-round and not year-round.
Okay, so, so the lines will run everywhere?
Well, that's, I should, I should step back and state that that's my intent.
Okay, because I'm in an area right now where the, we can't get internet. It stops, there's me and two of my neighbors can't get it. It stopped either side of us. And I know the provider out here now has quoted us thirteen thousand just to get internet to our house from four poles away. And like I said, we're the only three on this whole road, so I was just kind of worried that that might happen again.
Yeah, our approach to this project has not been to, it has not been to cut areas that we deem unprofitable from the get-go. The cable model is a different model. A government utility service is more committed to a model of providing for that service to everyone. At least, that's my thinking. So, other questions or comments for Brian?
Brian, could you just reiterate? That is how you built this model. It was using all the poles in town.
Absolutely. It's a hundred percent coverage. And in my view, that's the only way to go. But that's, that's me.
Thank you.
What was the, I guess, the monthly fee you proposed?
Well, we, that's a moving target, but we've talked anywhere from, on the pro forma, I mean, it runs from like thirty to seventy. We're not sure where we would end up pricing that. A lot of the example we talked about was built on the thirty-dollar one. And then there are tax dollars that are involved as well. So, being upfront, there's some subsidy that's coming from tax dollars as well. But the idea is that every resident in town could get internet service by fiber, which will just blow the socks off anything else that's which will just blow the socks off anything else that's, uh, out there right now, um, in terms of, of, of what's delivered for service, uh, for a reasonable and competitive fee. That's our goal. When I say reasonable and competitive, um, I, I don't mean a cable company that gives you a, a 12-month, um, you know, uh, deal that then doubles it, um, uh, on year two. That's not what we're looking at.
Okay.
Great. Brian, you can stick around with us if you want, or, um, you can say good evening. Um, we've gone well, well beyond our one hour. And I am going to ask the board to continue at least to run down through our discussion points.
If I can add value, I'm happy to stick around, otherwise I got to go move some stuff.
Yeah, I, I would go do that. I mean, I, I think we will be obviously talking with you again, uh, to, to, uh, at, at least on a sub, perhaps a subcommittee basis, or through Eric or whatever. So, we'll be back in touch.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Yes. So with that, we kind of finished reviewing and discussing the consulting work. Um, the next one is the big one, which is to talk about the funding and implementation timetables. And, um, I'm not sure if the purpose of this workshop is, is to discuss that in terms of, I don't think we can discuss that in terms of hard numbers, but I guess what we can discuss is, um, what we think about the different models that we've seen. And, um, and then obviously, uh, I do think we want to talk about the timetable a little bit as it relates to, um, as it relates to town meeting. To me, that's really important.
So Bruce, um, one quick, if I can jump in really quickly on that, uh, timing issue. Um, we are going to have to have a special election coming up, uh, for Sean Bello's seat. Uh, I believe that's, uh, either March, March.
March 9th.
That could be an opportunity to at least either do a straw poll or take an initial step towards, um, working on, um, the engineering costs, for example.
Yeah, let me, um, I, I'm just going to talk off the top of my head a little bit about, uh, about that. Um, and, and this comes back to the coronavirus situation that we've been all operating on. I am very concerned that, and, and I know we have the poll, um, and it has a couple of hundred responses. Um, I am very concerned about where we are, uh, and, and I want to do this more than anybody else. Well, I shouldn't say more than anybody else, I think other people want to do it too. Um, but, um, I, I am very concerned that we are getting ourselves very far out on a limb, uh, without the kind of robust discussion that I think is needed. Uh, I, I mean, I really see this as kind of a floor town meeting. Uh, I, I really, we need to be talking conversations around town, having roundtables perhaps. Um, but certainly having a couple hundred people in a room, or a hundred people in a room, and really airing out, uh, if you will, the pros and cons of this, and what everybody else sees is, is their vision. So, I, I'm very concerned about targeting, targeting this at a town meeting in June of this year. I'd love to do that, but, um, I, I feel we've been, uh, completely slowed down by COVID. Uh, and, I mean, we've kept the town functioning, we've done what we need to do. I think the governance that we've provided, uh, and, and so forth, uh, in the last month in terms of meeting online and so on and so forth, has been, uh, excellent. But it isn't the robust exchange that, um, a small-town democracy needs on a $4 million bond.
Well, a, a, and I agree that that would be nice, but I can't recall a town meeting where we had 200 voters since we gave away the elementary school to the school district. Um, so I don't think we're ever going to see that again. And I think that's unrealistic to think that's going to happen. Um, I have no trust that this coronavirus thing is going to end, that mandates are going to end. Um, now they're talking about, once you're vaccinated, we're still going to do masks, like indefinitely. So I think trying to plan around that is a mistake. Um, I think we've done more than just survive as a town during coronavirus. We did the complete fire station project and the library roof. Um, so we haven't just been holding our own, we've been moving forward, and we're doing a great job. Um, I do have a concern, um, about project management. I know that there's, um, we would be hiring a project manager, whether that's Brian or some other firm. Um, but of course, there needs to be guidance from the town level. Um, and I'm not sure how many more projects we can load on to the town manager. So my greatest, um, consideration on, on a planning level is, uh, not exceeding Eric's capacity. Or, uh, we had talked the other night possibly about maybe instituting a building committee or some group of people who would help with project management of these bigger infrastructure projects that we take on. Um, I think we can do a great job of reaching out to people. I love the idea of maybe using, um, the March election for a new local senator, uh, is either a straw poll or something more. Um, I think that's a great way to reach people. Um, so I guess that's where I'm at with that.
Yeah, I, um, we'll have to talk about that. I mean, I'm assuming that we will, uh, be encouraging absentee voting and so on, so forth, uh, advanced voting. Um, so I'm not exactly sure how that'll work.
Um, And we had great voter turnout, as we know. We had over 1,800 people who voted in this last election. So I think we might have an opportunity to have a lot of people participate, and internet's a timely thing.
We, we do. Catherine, I, I'm still concerned that we're not having the depth of discussion. Uh, when we have, and, and Cindy and Richard and Katie Baker, thank you for being here. But when we have two people at this kind of, uh, a meeting, I, I just feel I'm not getting, uh, as, as a representative of people. Uh, and I'm not getting it at the post office and other places too, because our interactions are now so limited. I think we need to have, uh, and, and I understand what you're saying about how long this might be. Um, but, um, that's my reservation.
I, I, I just, I, I just want to say that I have concerns. Uh, it's not that I, I, I'm not all aboard or whatever, but there are concerns for me because of the, just the raw scope of the project is, and, and, and I don't want us to get caught up in a quagmire that all of a sudden then becomes, that, that balloons into something that, that is, is much different. I, like, tonight is the first time I heard that there was any fiber being brought to area towns, including a piece of Reed Field. That's the first time I've heard that. And so, uh, it's like, the, I am, I just, like, my, I, I'll be honest with you, I'm scared to, to sort of commit to starting this when it doesn't see, you know, all I keep hearing is, there are a lot of variables. There are a lot of vari, it's like, well, sure, that's, uh, a $4 million project has a lot of variables. But, you know, this idea that like, well, we, it's, it's for the future, and we're doing it for sure, I agree with Bruce. I, I, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure that that's a voice of the town. You know what I'm saying?
That's what we need to find out.
Yeah, well, and the other part of this is, is also, um, I mean, it's a responsibility on us, as a board and the town too, is to sell this. But it's very difficult to sell it when you have limited capacity for communication. Um, when you are, quite frankly, distracted by, um, operating under emergency times of operations 24/7, on and off. So those, those things are, are concerns to me. Again, it's, to me, the bottom line is, um, you know, I, I'm, I'm kind of one of the people that gave us the book, you know, and said, we need to read this, we need to look at this, and I really like the town models, and we uh, hooked up with the, uh, the group that, uh, was looking at the multi-town, uh, possibility. We ended up being kind of a different town in, in that process. But, um, uh, you know, if I could pull the trigger tomorrow, um, magically, that would be great, but, um, I, I don't feel we have for the largest project the town has undertake, will undertake. Um, I don't think, I don't think we have the baseline conversations that we should be having.
Well, we're just starting.
I don't think we can in the next six months, I really don't.
Can I break my silence?
Please do, Richard.
Uh, I'm a resident of Reed Field and a taxpayer. And, uh, in listening to all of this, the idea of uh, using the special election as a advisory vote that would draw a significant number of people, seemed to me to be a very good idea. And, um, as somebody that's, you know, paying taxes, I would certainly encourage that.
Yeah, I, and, and again, I think we could probably do something, Richard, on a straw basis. I just, I even would, even with March, I just don't see it as something that, we, we don't want to put a warrant-type article to give us spending authority, I think.
Just an advisory.
Yeah, okay, we'll look at that. And maybe it's even a couple of advisory, um, questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do other board members think that that would be wise? Catherine, you brought it up.
Well, Eric brought it up, I agreed.
Okay. Well, I agree too, sure. Any, anytime we can, anytime we can find an avenue of input, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
And I, I like your point, Bruce.
I don't think it's an avenue of approval, though.
Yeah, no, I, I think that, I like your idea of having multiple, perhaps multiple options. Um, I mean, it doesn't have to be, uh, 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 you know, do you approve, uh, you know, approve of this one model? Uh, we could, we can look at it and try to have some flexibility and have some, um, diversity. Uh, and I do like the idea of at least giving us some direction to work in until we can do maybe something different, uh, if appropriate, in June, and then go from there. But, um, yeah, I, I think that, that the idea of having something on there is good, but the idea of having, um, some options is even better.
Well, and you could even ask people to give you an advisory. Is your, would your family be interested in signing on? So people might say, oh yeah, we want to do this, and you might get 1,000 people who say yes, but then you only get 35 families that say, yeah, we would commit. Well, that would be really telling. But you might get 1,000 families who say, yeah, let's do this. So that could give you some good information.
Okay, let's do this. Um, uh, let's ask board members to, uh, give some consideration to what kind of question or questions we might ask at the March 9th, uh, meeting. And just go ahead and email those to Eric. Eric, he would compile those, and then, uh, email them back out to the rest of the board for, uh, we would go on an agenda and get, and, and get discussed, and, um, as if it was a, a warrant item, obviously, before we put something on, on the ballot. I would say bracketed with that, however, uh, just like we have done with some elections, we would need to put together an information sheet, uh, that would highlight, and of course, we do have the brochure out and so forth, but I think we would need to highlight what the question's asking, and what, what, what's involved in that. Okay, so that's what we'll do with the board.
And Bruce, can we consider, um, in our questions that we're going to put together, having Brian assist with this process?
In terms of what?
Um, in terms of, he may already have access to questions that have been asked in other communities, how they've gotten
Oh, sure, sure. Sure, yeah, absolutely. Um, I wasn't sure what you, wh- where you were going with that. Um, but
At March 9th, is that the election date? Because you said a March
That's the election date, that is the election date.
Okay, so, yes.
So, um, the next point is to talk a little bit about governance models. Um, and I just wanted to, um, hear from the board on that. Uh, if we did set up a utility, um, operation, what kind of governance would you want to see? And, um, I mean, I'm actually thinking of, um, a board that, um, uh, operates at a very high level overseeing that utility, uh, that would have some sort of, uh, representation, uh, seed, seedage, uh, from the town, uh, perhaps a select board member. Uh, but we would actually recruit some, some individuals to, uh, or perhaps it should be elected office, I don't know. What, what's, what are people's thoughts?
Bruce, can I, can I jump in? I would like to see, basically, a town board with the appropriate expertise that is a board of directors, that, uh, oversees a management company and all of the responsibilities that that management company has to do, and plays a key, if not sole role, uh, with management input, uh, in determining what the cost to the subscribers will be on an annualized basis. I don't think we want to run it ourselves, I don't think we have that depth. But I certainly think that whoever ends up running it should report to a municipal utility board.
Yeah, uh, and I, I would say that, that if we use some sort of board of directors model, um, that, that would be parameters established out of, um, whatever the warrant voting authorized, uh, for, for example, I mean, if, uh, we, we couldn't, we couldn't, we don't want to establish a board that would start playing games with pricing.
Oh, I think part of the charter that creates this board would be that the, the key component is that it is going to be, if it's a municipally-funded enterprise, it is a net cost of operation, uh, structure, which means that whatever it costs to run it, that's what the subscriber base will be to fund it. That includes O and M costs, capital planning, uh, maintenance contingencies for storms, all of that. But net cost of operation. It's not, as you had said earlier, it's not to be a for-profit enterprise.
Yeah, and we may be getting ahead of ourselves, talking a lot about the governance model, but I think it's important to just have it threaded into the discussion, because I don't see it as just becoming, um, a line on Eric's, um, uh, you know, to-do list, that's, that's not what I see here. Um, it truly does need to be governed as a utility district or a utility provision, uh, and with an empowered board.
If we have to create the utility district to create the board, then so be it.
Well, and, and maybe we don't, but maybe we want to. Um, that's, that's what I'm saying. I know there are wa, uh, there's a water district in, um, in, in Waterville, Water District in Waterville. Um, and I think it may be multi-town, I'm not sure if Winslow's in on it or not, Eric, but they actually elect their, um, board members. Uh, and I'm not sure that's the right model for us, but maybe there are, maybe there are, maybe there is a public elected representative, and maybe there is an appointed representative from the select board. And then maybe there are three other board members who are recruited for special expertise.
Well, don't we belong to the water district in Winthrop for the Reed Field Water District, Eric?
We do, but we have a, a representative from, from the town on that.
Right, so that's an easy model to replicate.
Yeah, except we're the sole deal here.
I understand.
The town is the, the sole customer. Um, and then I, the, the last thing I had on the list was some what-ifs. And I, and we just need to bear that in mind in terms of what might be happening that will change the game in terms of state or federal resourcing changes. Um, and, you know, I'm still thinking about how we can also uh, lease services on these lines. I mean, they, fiber to the home can carry telephone. Fiber to the home can carry entertainment. Fiber to the home can carry other products, if you will. And so the model shouldn't necessarily be that every single, and I'm not sure it's going to be a huge amount, but that every single dime of operation comes from the tax base and, uh, the, the other customer. There may be some marketing angles on this that we, uh, would achieve. But probably that's dependent on building the infrastructure first.
Right.
I mean, and I, I'd love to say to the cable company, well, you may as well unplug from Reed Field because, or, you know, we'll carry you.
Well, we got an interesting, I don't, Eric, I don't think this went out to the whole board, it was part of the KCBLA, um, emails, but the article that, um, was sent by a consultant from somewhere, I think in New York, that was talking about, you know, like 65% of the country has fiber. And the 35% that doesn't is rural America. Um, and there are companies that, you know, are, are working to promote this, but it's, it's not the companies not the companies that are already providing service, because they provided it to the masses, where they can provide a, a certain base amount of infrastructure, and they have millions of customers who utilize it. And going out to the rural parts of the world or the country doesn't provide that level of profit, so they're not interested. And so there's been a lot, a lot done there, and maybe we need to bring some of those resources in, Eric, and provide them to the rest of the board, because I think just you, I think, Bruce, you're getting those. I'm not sure.
I do.
Well, and Dennis raises a good, you know, point about the Matrix proposal. I mean, that's something that the WKLCBA has known about for a long time. That's just a proposal, and they actually offered very little, nothing initially to the town of Reed Field, and then said, well, grudgingly, we might be able to cover a little bit of this one area that connects to Mount Vernon, or something to that effect. So, you know, bringing.
That's Eric frozen.
The whole board on it, other options. What's up?
Right. And just for your information, Dennis, it was either 3/10ths or 8/10ths of a mile that would be covered in all of Reed Field.
Gotcha, yeah.
So when they said small.
But I had, I still had no idea, you know what I mean? It's like, you don't, you don't know that it's even happening, so it's like.
Isn't that how it's supposed to work, Dennis? It's so smooth, you don't even notice it.
Well, yeah, and, and, you know, it's things like that, it's like, you know, what, what happens if another company wants to come in and do this for us? What, I mean, like, and manage it?
Well, and Catherine's right, they really don't. I mean, that's part of, I mean, we've been looking at this with the subcommittee for the past two years, basically, and after all that effort, we had one company say, well, we don't really want to help you, but if you force us, we'll give you 3/10ths of a mile.
Right.
I mean, so, one thing I would say is that, over the past two years of watching this, you know, there has been a tremendous amount of work done. Being able to communicate that is gonna be a little bit of a challenge, and I agree with Bruce completely, COVID doesn't help, but I also, you know, feel that a lot of times, people just, you know, aren't really that interested until it comes up on a, on a warrant, and we see it with the budget all the time. And most of the time, they're okay, and sometimes they're not. But I think that, that we do need to do more about that with, with the education side of things, and bringing everybody up to speed on what's been happening as much as possible. But again, we put out notices about the WKLCBA to our listservs on the website, we're doing a survey, we had the mailing. So people are becoming more aware, and we've had, I've had some, some emails today come in as a result of the reminder about this meeting. And so the word's getting out there, it's slower, but I think that we're just gonna have a challenge, no matter COVID or not, in engaging people, because that's what we've seen, you know, since we've gone away from town meeting, is that it's really hard to get people to engage outside of a ballot.
Right, so then my, then my, my, my question then would be, you know, in this same vein, you know, then do we have the ability to communicate such an incredibly large concept to people who don't give a shit?
Well, I, Dennis, yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
They might want it.
That's my job, come on.
They might start to want, they might want to start giving one when there's a dollar attached to it, and I think that was the point.
Right.
I think Eric was making that, once it shows up on a warrant, so rather than on a warrant, if it shows up on this March ballot, where we have some, you know, feedback kind of articles, then people might say, oh, okay, now I have interest. But also, I just wanted to tell you, this proposal from Matrix is not a done deal. And actually, the towns that are looking at it are thinking that it's probably, well, it may not be a good deal for them, because in the long run, it's very expensive to the, to the people, and there's no way to provide any relief to different people in town, so you can't price it differently for elderly, or widows, or people with children, or people with low income, because it's a for-profit company. And they're, what they proposed, that's what you get. You get what they're gonna give you, period, done deal, or you don't get it. And so what we're, what we're trying to, and they would not give us a price. Well, actually, I think, Eric, they did say they wouldn't give us a price if we wanted to pay for it.
Yeah, so basically, they're, they're offering to do what we're suggesting to do by building this network, fiber network over everything, and they, they'll, they'll provide the operating for that if we build it, but that begs the question then, why don't we just build it and, and put the whole process out to bid and get a, a vendor that can give us the best price, instead of locking in with Matrix? So, yeah.
Yeah, and on top of it all, I, I think Matrix isn't being very honest in terms of, you know, this pricing at 100 megabits and 200 megabits. I mean, it's, it's just like with your cable company, when you increase your speed, pay for more speed, nobody comes and puts an extra little layer of cable around your existing cable, okay? It's just a switching kind of thing. And it's a, and, and actually, we did have a conversation with Brian about that at one point, and it is just a pricing scheme.
Exactly.
It's already there. So if Matrix builds this, the full gig is there, or the 200, whatever they're bringing into town is there, and everything under it is just a pricing scheme.
Right, and so you just want to, the reason for looking at it, and these are the things we need to explain to the public somehow, but the reason for doing it ourselves would be that we control the pricing. Whereas if you go with a for-profit company, it will be like Spectrum, in that they will offer you what they want to give you, and if you don't like it, too bad, because we own it.
Right, and I'm all for the local control, I love that. I think that is fantastic. But, but, you know, I, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm interested to hear more. I can't wait to hear more about the way that subscribers, you know, there have to be a number of subscribers that sign up, or it's all scrapped anyway, right?
Right.
Yes, but that 40% comes from projects that have been done all around the Northeast, Maine, New Hampshire, and Vermont. So projects that have gone in and been started and are existing, that's a typical base number who will transfer from their current service to the new.
And that's based on?
It's not guaranteed, but it has some meat to it.
Yeah, gotcha.
Okay. So, I mean, in closing out this discussion, you know, hopefully, we can do something with the March 9th meeting that gets us some input, and maybe what the March 9th input ends up doing is igniting the conversation, and maybe that's all it really needs. Because, again, I think this service is very important, but I am very concerned about getting so far out on a limb with this, that it's creates a problem down the road for us in terms of, of how we roll out timing on it especially. And even with March 9th, Catherine, I'm telling you, I'm pretty reserved about putting this forward in a bond package in June of this year, but that's my own brothers. Are there any points of discussion that I missed, or commentary that people would like to make to kind of close it out?
No, great job.
Yes, hear, hear, thank you.
Okay, so, get those thoughts to Eric, and we'll try to reduce them to some sort of list that we can share, and then we'll build a discussion about that into the next board meeting, so that we can go ahead and put a couple advisory questions. And I think we probably don't want to end up with 10 questions here, but.
No.
Two, two or three really good ones.
Right to the point.
When is our next meeting?
Our next meeting is in January.
Do we know the date, Eric?
Yeah, I believe it's 14th or 16th, let me maybe double check here, I got the calendar.
Okay, it's not that first week, it's not the 4th.
It's not the 4th. I think it's, I think it's seven days later, 11th?
11th or the 18th, yeah, I'll have to double check that, but.
The 18th is MLK Day.
Yep, but no, we'll definitely, and I can reach out to, like, Baileyville and Callas, and some, and Islesborough, these towns that have done this, and ask what they had for advisory votes, because I'm almost certain that they both had advisory votes prior to initiating their efforts in any meaningful way, so, yeah.
Yeah, and the other thing that occurs to me, and this is just a last one thing, there were a couple of different models in that fiber book that I'm gonna go back and take a look at, and it may just make sense for us to pick up the phone and talk to a couple people. For example, I know there was a, a small town similar to ours in, in rural Massachusetts, because a big piece of Massachusetts is actually very rural, believe it or not, when you head to the west, and there were quite a few quotes there from a, a local select, select person, so that might be a good one for me to pick up the phone and talk to, or whatever. I want to thank everybody for coming to the workshop, I appreciate all the input. I think we got all the discussion points, at, at least a start on hearing where we are as a board on it, a little bit of direction. Thank you, we're, we're, you can stop the recording.